All right, welcome to this afternoon's work session, or pre-agenda meeting, rather. We will, well, first of all, are there any items that a Commissioner would like to take off or discuss?
Discuss. I want to pull number 10.
Not to pull it, but is that what you want to talk for the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, for the agenda. 10, 34, and 37.
10, 34, and 37. Let's see what that may be.
I just want discussion on them.
Okay, is Ms. Carroll here?
Yes.
10, give me that again, Commissioner.
34.
10, 34.
And 37.
37. All right, Ms. Carroll.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioner. Do you want me to read it out, Commissioner, or do you have any specific questions for this one?
Just, just an explanation and just tell, just an explanation.
Yes, ma'am. This is a project.
Ms. Rogers, please just read, read it out and then answer the question.
Okay, sure.
So everybody know what we're talking about.
This is a recommendation for approval of final contract terms. This is for a co-op purchase 22-90. This award was approved on June the 21st, 2022. However, there were additional terms and conditions to negotiate with the supplier. The final contract with the precise terms and conditions are attached for your review and information. The initial recommendation was to utilize the Houston-Gaverson Aerial Council Government Co-op Contract for the purchase of the 911 Equipment and Emergency Notification and Software Services through Intro Life and Safety Solutions Corporation, who's located in Omaha, Nebraska. The total amount of the contract was $92,700. There is no additional cost to the county for the request for today, and the agreement is attached for your review and information.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask about, just making sure it was no additional cost.
No, ma'am, no additional cost.
You knew what I was going to ask.
Yes, ma'am. It was just some additional terms because it was a co-op that we had to go back to the vendor, but no additional cost for the county.
All right.
All right, item 34. Is that, yes, you got another one for me? Okay.
Mr. Reed.
So 34 is Resolution 2020, 2022-190, authorizing the county to apply for and accept additional ER Emergency Rental Assistant Program grant funds from the United States Department of Treasury Consolidated Appropriations Act 2021 to authorize the chairman to execute documents relating there to, otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution. Authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of the resolution for other purposes, and this amount is for $6,564,181.11.
Commissioner Anderson.
Okay, I'm just looking at, so you're asking, we're asking for additional funds?
For rental assistance.
For rental assistance?
That's correct.
Okay. And who will be distributing to these funds again? Is it going to be the same office, or who is it going to be?
Commissioner, I think we need to look back at the contract to see whether or not presently G-Men or African Children Fund and/or Heart Shinnish will still be the vendors of record. So we need to get back to answer that question for you to see whether or not we have to procure a new vendor or go through the procurement process to bring in a vendor.
Okay, but can we hold this until we find out who the vendor is going to be? Can we hold it?
Receiving the funding won't dictate necessarily who the vendor record could be, so I think the board can still accept the funds, and we still will need to bring back to you who the vendor would be after that.
Vendor record is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, number 37, Mr. Reed.
Item 37 is Resolution 2022-193, authorizing amendment to Resolution 2013-135 and 2020-47 to increase the allowed amount for travel and training expenses on the county issued credit card to authorize the chairman to execute any necessary documents and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes. One thing prior to your question, Commissioner, in the resolution, it has, it references 30,000 as the limit, but it's actually 50 is what finance is requesting. So there will be an amended 193 that you all will sign, not the one that's in your book.
Okay, thank you.
Your questions for the venue, Commissioner Anderson.
That's it, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
All right, at this time, we're going to have a presentation on proposed broadband feasibility study, Jason Brookins.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. So for tonight, we just wanted to just give you a very brief overview of the broadband feasibility study and the ask that is on for the Commission meeting the next one. Yeah. So what up, so Takiya Thomas is our Digital Equity Administrator for the county. She's going to be giving you the presentation tonight, but I did want to just say that overall, this study, if we undergo it, will ensure that Clayton County is adequately and accurately included in the state's plans to apply for grant funding. There is a large amount of federal grant money out there, and all of it runs through the state, and it also runs through, you know, how programs are set up. And so they want you to have the Office of Digital Equity set up. They want you to have conversations with the providers. They want you to have, so we're doing all of this homework so that we're the first ones in line when the state starts to give out the money for the broadband. And so with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, oh, not Vice Chair, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm so nervous, y'all, bear with me. So as Jason stated, I'm going to give you all a brief overview of why we are seeking approval for this study. You're going to be my clicker. Okay. Okay, so what is a broadband feasibility study? Basically, the study is going to assess the county's current situation and recommend whether or not it's going to be economically feasible for the county to take on being its own broadband provider. And the study should take approximately 12 to 15 months to complete. And what problems we're trying to solve. It's several problems that we want to begin to, to address with this study regarding broadband access. The first being improving affordability. We know that we want long-term, high-speed internet access for our residents and businesses. Not those introductory plans that you get for like the first two, first one or two years, and then they double or triple, and you got to start switching your internet service provider because you can't afford it anymore. The next being fostering economic growth. I know it's a lot of talk about bringing businesses to Clayton County, and they want the infrastructure and the fiber in place, so that will foster growth, as well as making more jobs available to the people of Clayton County. And even when it comes to teleworking, there's a lot of good teleworking jobs that are out there, but you got to have minimum requirements on internet, so it would address that issue as well. Solving the digital divide, we've talked a lot about digital divide when it comes to, one example, homework gaps, children having to go to the library, go to a friend's house, go to a parking lot where there's internet. We don't want that to happen, so the broadband feasibility study is going to help us to learn how we're going to close that digital divide. Creating local resilience and control, we want a network that will be designed to meet our needs, Clayton County's needs. What's in place, obviously, is not in place everywhere. Some places is not affordable, so we want it to design infrastructure that can suit our needs, minimize outages, so we'll have more control over outages, and then to control pricing as well by being our own provider. And the last one, promote competition and choice, this could potentially increase the number of providers because maybe once it's being said that we're going to be our own provider, maybe the other companies will decide, oh, we better get some better plans or, you know, do something different, because we're going to create some competition by, by doing this. And then we have our stakeholders, which of course is you all, the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Education will be a big, big player in this, Department Directors and Staff, which we've already began to start working with on the digital equity study part, the citizens of Clayton County, and private fiber and internet service providers and nonprofit service providers. Future, current and future funding opportunities. So this is just a list of some current and future. We're dealing with ARPA now. We have the BEED Grant, which is the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Grant, which is going to be $42 billion, which of course will be split up between the states in the United States. The Middle Mile Grant, that's about $1 billion. Bipartisan Infrastructure Law was kind of recent, that's $65 billion. These are all different funding opportunities that we may qualify for, that we will pursue. And of course, we have municipal bonds as an option and public private partnerships or P3. And that is pretty much what we're asking or asking for approval for, and those are the reasons why. And the next steps would be on you all to approve the contract with CTC, who we're currently working with on the Digital Equity Survey, and they've been doing a phenomenal job, so we don't doubt that they won't do a phenomenal, phenomenal job on this as well. So do you all have any questions?
Any questions?
Yes. Are they working with some other municipalities or commissions or legislators?
Yes, they, they have several, several clients nationwide. They did something.
Here in Georgia?
In Georgia.
So they're actually working with the state of Georgia on their plan as well.
Any other questions?
I just want to, wait.
Commissioner.
Yes. First of all, no need to be nervous. Y'all work hard over there. You know, it's a good thing when you come with information, then you really don't have to be, but the work that you all were doing in this space is really good, and had the opportunity to speak to some folks when they were just doing some survey questions. And I know that this is something that's a passion of Mr. Jason Brookins, Director Brookins, so I know it's going to work out really well for us. And I believe that people need to understand what this is really going to mean for our county, the fact that we're going to be able to ensure that we do our part so that our kids can always be online. A lot of households cannot afford to increase the amount of service provided. In my little house, it's just me and the, myself and the twins now, and even with that, I had to increase my capacity because you think about by the time your phones are online, the computers are online, everything is online now. So I think this is going to be really good, and I'm looking forward to watching you all as you go through this process, and you all continue to give this board information. So thank you, and thank you for your passion for doing it as well, Mr. Kaya.
And let me just add to that, that it's my understanding that the work that you're doing now, the foundation you're laying, that once those funds start to come down, will be ahead of the game and in a position to get it ahead, ahead of time. So thank you for what you're doing there.
I have a question. How long will it take to lay the, I guess, the fiber, or the cable throughout the county? Because I, because I know when we had the discussion before, I was like, oh, I thought everybody, you know, had it and it came through my neighborhood, no, you know, people were thinking, hey, it's out there, and we know, we know it wasn't, but at the end of the day, how long will it take?
It's a, it's a lengthy process. There's a considerable amount of planning that goes into laying fiber throughout, everywhere, and so I, I can't tell you how long it will take. I can say that generally, the approach that is taken is they'll look for the ones that are the easiest ones to lay first, to get those early wins, and then they'll move on to the, to the ones that require more engineering work.
Okay, thank you.
Has there been any discussion about different P3 opportunities, private partner opportunities with some of the cable providers as far as, in a sense, having our own network, but the maintenance falling on them? I know there's a lot of funding out there from those ISPs to begin to do that. That's my first question. And second, have we begun to put together any type of high-level schematic, networking schematic for the county?
So we haven't had discussions regarding the P3. We have talked with them when it comes with digital equity and working with them on that. That's kind of the next step. That's kind of the, one of the main purposes of the broadband feasibility study is to get with the providers. But high level, so, no. But we have, as part of the Middle Mile Grant that we're working towards, working with Transportation and Development on, we've had to sit down and look at the corridors about laying fiber down our corridors and building on our existing fiber infrastructure already. And so we've had discussions internally, but we haven't, it's not been one that we could say, okay, here's, this is what we're doing.
Correct, I got you. Because as we spoke, as you and I have spoken, I think to lay a strong fiber network throughout the county begins to attract huge commercial type of, of interest, especially from those high-seeking bandwidth companies.
They're, they're building data centers all over, and you got to have the infrastructure in place to do it, and so.
All right, any other questions? All right, again, thank you for the presentation and all the work that you were.
Thank you, Board.
Taking in this space. Next is discussion request, Station 13, I believe, City Manager, City of Jonesboro, Mr. Ricky Clark, I'm sorry, Ricky Lamar Clark, Jr.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mrs. Stanford and staff. I would be remiss if I did not share with you guys that we do have four of our council members here with us tonight, just for us to have a conversation. So I'm solely here because there is talk that Station 13 is going to close.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, could you recognize council members as here?
Why, of course, Mr. Chairman. We have William Billy Powell, Dr. Daniel Sartor, Ms. Patricia Sebohan. We also have our Chief of Police here, Chief Tommy Lee Henderson. And all of you, because you're all representatives of the City of Jonesboro as well.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
But no, so I'm here because of Station 13, so I wouldn't be a city manager if I did not come to advocate for something that means so much to our community, and that is the services that have been provided by the Clayton County Fire Department and EMS Services. I must say, in all of my governmental history, I've never worked with a fire team such as this one. They are absolutely phenomenal, and we, we are appreciative in the city, even though we don't offer fire services. Through service delivery and an agreement that was done many years ago, our residents have benefited from that station for quite some, some time, right there on North Main Street. I'm simply here because we feel as a city, we've done our part, we've brought you economic development, we've supported you, we've always been a listening ear, as well as you have been with us. Nothing in this city, any of these new projects that you see, would have happened had it not been for the support of all five of you sitting in front of us. And that's why I'm here today, just to advocate. I know that there is talk of it moving down to Terra Boulevard, but in my seven years of being in Clayton County, I've lived in District Four for six or seven of those years. Now that I'm in another area of this amazing county, Terra Boulevard has its own set of issues, and that issue is, we just have a lot of traffic, there are a lot of commuters going both directions every day, morning and evening, up and down that boulevard. So now with the IT community, the IT center that is there, that the City of Jonesboro allows, with no, no question, the Justice Center that has been there for a number of years, we also are in talks or understand that there's a fuel station going off of Poston Road, and to also add a fire station there when we already have one that's here, I really don't understand, and that's why I asked Mr. Stanford to allow me the opportunity to get some better understanding of how it first would be more cost-effective to close down the station that is already existing as a station and build a new one. Second, when we were first approached about this initiative in refiguring or reconstructing what that fire station looked like, because the county wanted ownership of the building, the City of Jonesboro was 1,000% on board with it. Of course, with any real estate transaction, there is something called negotiation. And so for us, when I took this before our mayor and council, as all of you know, one of the most historical things that happened in Jonesboro was switching over from a Jonesboro Fire Department to Clayton County Fire Department. And since that, since that time, our citizens have benefited from an amazing service. When I took it before my board, just conceptually, every last one of them unanimously was like, yes, that's something that we want. If the fire department is looking to increase the density of that facility by moving their administrative staff over to that building and reconfiguring what that building looks like, we're all forward. However, as with any real estate transaction, you always need an appraisal. Unfortunately, in the current times that we were in, at that time, we couldn't get it as quick as we could two, three years ago, because it's something you don't have fire stations selling every day. And to be honest with you, we put out an RFP and received absolutely no bids back relative to those appraisal services, but it's been consistent with some of the other, some of the other city properties that we've tried to get appraised. And so for us, we're working on North Main Street, we're working on the streetscape. We have, we, we have plans and a work to continue this streetscape from the downtown district to North Main Street. And one thing that I can say that this city has gotten well, we've really gotten well, this quality of life enhancements that we've tried to do, as well as working collectively with each and every last one of our citizens, as well as our governing bodies around this county. And so we're here to ask of you, a lot of planning that you guys have done, we've planned around it, from the plan of the new fire station, okay, if the county is serious about really reconfiguring what this building looks like, it gives us more of an opportunity to really focus on what that North Main Street corridor looks like. Because while some may look at a fire department as just that, we look at it as a driver for economic development, because when you clean up one building, everyone around it wants to follow suit. In addition to that, so we've planned for that. In addition to that, this, this complex here, we are excited about that project. We're excited about that project moving forward, because we in fact have bid out our properties to build this oasis right here in the heart of our community, so that we can say like other capital cities or county seats, that we have a true downtown feel. You have your governmental offices, as well as you have residences right around that, all clenched within a park, which Lee Street Park has benefited all of us. So again, as you guys put out plans, we follow suit, especially if it's in our city. Again, we just don't want to see any vacant buildings. We're open to having any conversation, so that you guys can tell us, where are we missing the mark? What is the county looking for? Is it a negotiation? Because in turn, our, our response was, we don't have a amount of the building yet, because we just couldn't get an appraisal. Actually, I received the appraisal today. Our request was $1.5 million, not cash, it was in-kind services, meaning we don't want the money, just assist us with major corridors, roads that cross jurisdictions, like roads that are in the city, my apologies, like a 138, like a Jonesboro road, because each and every one of you, as well as your constituents, as they're coming to do business downtown, they're traveling those roads. However, in the City of Jonesboro, we don't have a transportation department specifically, and so it's a lot harder for us. That's why we fall so much, as well as some of the other cities, under the service delivery strategy, because it's just easier for the county with an annualized contract to assist us getting some of that work done. And at the end of the day, while the City of Jonesboro has done amazing things, every major article, every major magazine that you can think of, this city has been featured based upon the work that we've done. And again, it's been largely in part because of our partnerships with this county commissioners, and we're appreciative of that relationship, and we just want it to continue. But our theme is, we don't want any vacant buildings in Jonesboro. As much as we're trying to develop this city, we don't want any vacant buildings. So whatever, whatever we can do, I'm here tonight solely asking for you to tell us, if we missed the mark, tell us what it is. If it's a negotiation, let's have that open negotiation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Clark. Any questions for Mr. Clark? All right, thank you for your presentation. I for one will take what you've said under consideration and, and look at whatever information you have to provide in addition to.
Well, just to be clear, I don't have anything additional to provide, other than a community that doesn't want any vacant buildings from the fire station to the library. We don't want no vacant buildings around this community. We want to see our things thriving, because we feel as a city, we've done what you guys preach each and every meeting. We've tried to make the citizens of this county and this community proud, and vacant buildings won't do that. So if you leave us with a vacant fire station, just like we were not able to get any comps for fire stations until this long, just imagine how hard it would be to find a tenant for that building.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What did you do with the other fire station that you left open?
I'm sorry?
The old fire station, what did you all do with it?
So I think there's a difference. So as you know, right now, fire station, the volunteer fire station that we had in Jonesboro is now a restaurant.
And what, the land that you used, your green, where'd y'all get that land from?
When you say where we got the land from?
The green, yes, the green that allowed for that restaurant to be flourishing, which is beautiful.
So there was actually three buildings in the back of it. One of them was a burned-out building, dilapidated, blighted building that the county owned. There was a building in the middle that was Alcoholics Anonymous, and then there was a print shop, Will Print. So what we did, based upon conversation with the Commission, again, in every, every theme of my conversation, I will always support the partnerships that we've had. Through those conversations, we were able to renegotiate land based upon the county allowing Alcoholics Anonymous, the Clayton House to.
Move to District Three.
To move to District Three on Commercial Trail, I believe is what the street is called.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want us to be clear that that was a land swap, and that was moved to District Three. Thank you so much. Y'all have done a great job.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm not, I want to make certain I answered your question, I'm not sure where you were going.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, but a great job y'all are doing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I appreciate the council members' attendance for the work session, as well as the chiefs. Good to see you, Chief. All right, that was the last item on our agenda, so at this time, we stand adjourned until 6:30. Oh, wait a minute, we got one more item. That's right, there needs to be a point of clarification.
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Good afternoon, I think we're still in the afternoon. So I wanted to make a point of, or an update. On this past Wednesday, I presented information related to Africa Children's Fund, and wanted to make a clarification on something that I had stated at the, at the meeting. I stated that the amount of funds that went from the county through Africa Children's Fund was 805,000, based on it being in an agreement for administrative funds. We've learned since that time that they are actually involved in cutting checks to landlords. So I wanted to make that known to the, to the board, and I'll actually turn it over to Mr. Stanford. This does not change the analysis as to the board having the power to enter a contract with them for their administrative fees, nor does it change the audit, which this board had done. But I wanted to clarify that when I said it was only 805, that that figure was not correct.
Commissioner Anderson.
Well, what is that figure? And I have another question. I have a two-part question. I think, Chuck, if you don't mind, you said they cut checks. Now, previously, it was discussed and stated that they do not touch the money. So are you saying they do?
And.
Hold on a second, let her.
Good evening. Yes, ma'am, we are having some significant issues in that area of finance right now, and that was a misstatement last Wednesday, that we are, that they are actually cutting the checks themselves. They are.
Hold on, hold on, will you specify who they?
ACF, African Children's Fund. So they are sending the information to us, and then we are cutting a check for them based on the information that they send us regarding the landlords.
You said it was a two-point, two-part question.
The first part was, how much? He said that 800 and something thousand was not the correct answer, I mean, amount, and you were going to give us another amount, yes.
So that's the administrative cost. We are working right now to reconcile exactly how much that we have actually sent them of the allotment, and we'll get that to you as soon as we have it.
More or less?
Definitely more, because they're actually paying everything that's going through the judicial, the judicial process.
To landlords.
To the landlords.
Commissioner.
Actually, it was going to be a question, number three to that. So let me make sure I hear this correctly. So last Wednesday, we heard a presentation on how this process worked, and I went back and watched it, Mr. Reed, because I wanted to make sure I took good notes. Your first statement to the board was, well, there are no questions about voting.
Your first statement to the board was, well, there are no questions about voting and so forth, because they're not the ones really handling money, and your first statement was that the judge was cutting the checks, and that was noted. That's what was stated. Then you came back, y'all came back and you clarified, well, no, the county is cutting the checks. So you were saying that this organization was only utilized for administrative purposes to be able to collect said information. And at that point, I think the entire board, well, majority of the board, walked away with even more questions, because we did not, or I did not understand what exactly we were paying them for in administrative cost. And then also, you stated that the reason that the voting process was not an issue was because Africa Children's Fund was not actually awarded the money and cutting the checks. You said the county was cutting those checks. And I knew at the time that when we voted, we voted for 9 million dollars. We voted for an amount to be awarded to Africa's Children's Fund. So that is a concern to me. Number two, there were one, two, three, four people that came before this Board of Commissioners. So my question is, at what point did anyone go back to double-check these processes before this information was communicated to the board? Was it all done based on hearsay and a conversation? Or did the people who are actually directors and leaders, and there is our legal counsel, actually go and pick up the paperwork and look at it, and look at what's being done and how it is done?
So let me speak to the contract aspect, the part that deals with the contract. The contract does not speak to the county paying Africa Children's Fund any money. It only speaks to the administrative fees of 400,000 for one and 405 for the other. The amount that they were supposed to distribute is not spelled out at all in that amount. So, I'm sorry, in that agreement. So when I stated that the judicial branch was involved with that, if I said, if I said that Judge Wright, Chief magistrate Judge Wright Hill was cutting checks, that was a misstatement. What my, what I was intending to say is that the way that the county knows how much money is at issue that should be, should be paid out, is through a judicial process. So in other words, the landlord or the tenant, they are involved with magistrate court, they have a settlement agreement or an order, which that information, to my knowledge, is given to either Africa Children's Fund or the county for that entity to pay out. Not, and I'll make it clear, it is not judicial system that is cutting checks. So I think that was the first thing, and what was the other question that I?
Well, we could just skip to the last part. It was four people that came before this board and provided information. Did you provide that information based on conversations and hearsay, or did you actually go back as the COO, the CFO, and our legal advisor, and look at the information provided before you presented it to the board? Because this is not a simple mistake. This is serious. And unfortunately, I feel bad for Ms. Merritt, because you were called upon to say, yes, that's what we're doing, and now you're telling us that's not what you're doing. You were called upon to verify that checks were being cut by the county, and not the other way around.
Correct, Commissioner. So when it's all said and done, it was the latter. We did go through a process to verify the information in hand. We had an hour and a half meeting prior to the special call meeting on Wednesday, with all the pertinent parties that go through all things African Children's Fund. In that meeting, we deliberated on a lot of different things, to include what was the funding that went directly to the African Children's Fund, as we verified that information. All we were aware of at that moment in time was 800,000 dollars in admin fees. We later found out that that was not the fact. This board has put a trust in the collective of this leadership to provide you accurate information in a timely manner, and do it in a way that's transparent to, not just to this board, but to the public. We did not do a good job on that on Wednesday, that's the fact. So what we're left with now, there are some other actions that we're taking, that we're glad to talk to more, to the board about in executive session regarding actions that led to that. But more importantly, something that Commissioner Franklin talked about before, as it pertains to the restructuring of the grant process. Our grant process, we have a lot of moving parts that's calling for us to look at that and really consolidate that, and bring a recommendation back to this board about the fluidity of that. So we recognize that, but we could not continue to go in the process, as Attorney Reed talked about. We provided this information in a public meeting, we need to come back to this board in a public meeting as to the erroneous mistake that we made with regards to information that you provided. And so we can talk more about where we're going as it pertains to the staffing side of the house, but more importantly, we do look at our process more diligently and make some of the different recommendations to this board about how we govern ourselves.
And I thank you for the way you addressed that, but I still have a question. Did you all ever see the financials before you came before this board? And I think that unfortunately, that's gonna have to be a question for you, because you were asked to verify this.
So, yes and no. We've been working on trying to get the information reconciled. We have had some significant personnel issues, and I'm welcome to discuss that with you separately, that has led to some serious misunderstandings about how these, how this vendor was set up.
I got it.
Commissioner, may I?
Yes, sir.
I need to be held responsible for the misinformation. At the end of the day, the communication comes from the operations, because that space emanates from our space. We work in conjunction with finance, and Attorney Reed was providing context to work based upon information that he was provided. So ultimately, when it comes to a responsibility level, as it pertains to the information provided, ultimately, the COO's office should be responsible for the information that did not come forward to this board.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but a comment. Thank you all for the clarification.
Yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Also, I wanna say thank you too, because, you know, just bringing Judge Wright Hill up, I just, I wasn't very comfortable with that. And I think that next time, you all shouldn't bring others into it until you have the facts together.
Well, I believe in that space, she requested him to come and speak.
Yeah, but she had no business up there, and I'm just gonna leave it like that.
She was elected official, she has to be up here.
But I still feel like that was not her place. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, point of order. I've sat on this floor, and, yes, because you did not give the commissioner an opportunity to finish. I have a hard time, my brain goes too fast, and when you say stop, I stop. But the whole time that commissioner was speaking, you interrupted her and didn't let her finish her thought, and that's in all fairness. Especially with what we're dealing with here, it's not fair to cut her off.
Anything else?
Are you thinking she'll just-
No, I'm fine. I said what I had to say.
We stand adjourned until 6:30.